Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 1st, 2014, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. A roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Havlin?
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Does anyone wish to move the adoption of the meeting agenda?
Some move.
Second?
Got a motion, a second, to adopt a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And then we've got a consent agenda in front of us. Is there any council member that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I would, Your Honor, item E, please.
Say again.
E.
E?
E is an elephant.
Member Bennett wants L. I want K. Member Brindle, anything?
Um, just for discussion, F.
F. All right. We've got E, F, K, L. Someone want to move the balance of the consent agenda?
Some move.
Second?
Got a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items E, F, K, and L. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And then, item E, which was the request for purchase of squad light bars.
Yes, and I see that this is for legacy light bars. Just wondering what the lighting technology is being used in the new bars. Is it an LED or?
It is LED lighting.
Okay, so the technology's changing over, is that?
Our current light bars are LED, but these are much better quality, use less power, LEDs in our newer ones, yes.
Okay, so new generation of the LED bulb. Okay, thank you. With that, I'll move that item.
Second?
Thank you. Got a motion, a second, on item 4E, which is the request for purchase of squad light bars. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Item F, Member Brindle.
Thank you. This is Resolution Number 2014-77, approving Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Project Agreement for the years 2014 and 15. I just want to make it known to those in our audience and watching broadcast of this meeting that emergency preparedness is one of the duties of the Community Health Commission in our city, and it's, the responsibilities are bound by the information in this item, but it's a huge responsibility to make sure that Edina and Edina residents are protected and prepared in case of an epidemic or of a disaster of some sort. I know that Jeff Brown is in the audience. Do you want to say anything about this one? Not really? I've covered it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. But I just want to let everyone know that that is a huge responsibility for the city to undertake, and this commission, then, is our caretaker of that responsibility, so just letting everyone know that that process is there.
Would you move that matter?
So, I will move this matter. Second?
Got a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution 2014-77, approving the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Project Agreement. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Next one was mine, 4K, which was the change order, proposed change order on the contract involving the Burt's Crest B Neighborhood Roadway Improvements. Director Milner, do you want to address this issue? You want to continue the project until next year? My specific question was, what is that going to do to the potential costs if we delay it one year?
Yes, Mayor, the contractor has confirmed that he can hold all the bid items that are under his direct workforce, and he is confident that he could, he's going to get the same confirmation from his subcontractors, but he has not confirmed that yet, and we are still working with them to confirm that. So, at least half have been confirmed. They will stay the same, and we're working with getting confirmation on the remaining of those at this time. So, we can report back. We'll definitely report back to the neighborhood if there is any changes to those items and any assessments, but we don't see any significant changes to the overall project costs or utility fund costs or the assessments by pushing this project to 2015.
All right, and by pushing this project to 2015 due to a variety of factors that you've raised, including wet weather, it wouldn't preclude us from visiting, revisiting this topic again if we saw some significant increase in costs, I take it?
Yes, council direction could revisit it, I believe.
Member Swenson?
I wonder, are we at the point where it doesn't do us any good to revisit it because it's too late in the season to start and finish the project in a timely manner for the winter?
Oh, that's correct. Yeah, for this year.
Yeah, I don't, you know, so we put it off, and we put it off. I don't want the bid to change, so I guess I would approve this if the bid didn't change, but if we're only half, gone through half of the subs to confirm dollars, and we don't have confirmation, there could be a large sub that comes in. I know it bid a little bit under budget, but to me, that's the advantage of the city and our residents. That's not to the disadvantage of the contractor, who then wants to put it off for a year and then, and I understand the problem this year and the rain, et cetera, but I just, to me, the contractor's asking to do something from us, I think we have the ability to ask that the bids stay the same.
We can do that. I can get confirmation and bring a-
I don't think anybody disagrees with that. The question was going to be if we approved this, move it back to 2015, and then we saw some significant changes on the costs. Could we revisit the matter in 2015, early 2015? That's what I was concerned about.
Your Honor, or the possibility of making your approval of this offer conditional upon bids staying the same?
Mm-hmm.
And then he, and then the general can present that, that offer back to his subs.
I would make that motion. I'll second.
We got a motion, a second, that we approve the change order recommended by staff to move the Burtwood B Neighborhood Roadway Improvement Project back to next year, contingent on the ability to secure all bids from contractors and subcontractors at the same level they were bid on a prior basis. Everybody understand that? Any discussion? I'm concerned about, what do we do then if he can't, if we can't get those authorizations, and now it's August, and that project's supposed to be done this year, then what?
He does not have capacity to do it this year. So, the bid unit prices discussion, I think, would be, it's so linked to oil prices, what time of year will they lock it in for next year? They may do that now because they do a lot of work in town. We were 10% below our estimated assessments at the public hearing. The bids came in 10% under, so technically, legally, we can go up to that amount, and we do go above what we publish with our awards because we do uncover unseen circumstances during construction, but we can definitely see if we can lock those in.
Are there penalty provisions in the contract for them not getting their work done as scheduled?
There is, but there's language also about events out of their control, and we asked them to do a big change order for a different project, but also the weather conditions are record levels of wet weather, and there was a private contractor that was in their way that they couldn't start right away in the May, in May, so there was issues that were outside of their control.
So, what's the difference-
Member Swenson?
Between passing this motion and telling him that we expect his subs to come in at the same amount because the bid has to be at the same amount, and then having him come back to you in August and saying he can't do it, versus passing it, not passing this motion, just saying, "We're not going to do the project," and hoping that his 50% of the subs that haven't come back don't go over the 10% or don't go up, and then you said, "Well, revisit it if they go up." I mean, we're revisiting it either way, so let's give him a little leverage and tell him that we expect it to come in at the same price.
And he can use that leverage with his subs.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mayor, you have a contract right now with this company.
That's my point. We got a contract.
And the contract says you have, there's a completion date. Now, he can argue why he can't meet that, and you're just agreeing to change the completion date, but I think it should be clear you're not going to pay him anymore. It's his request to change the completion date.
Yeah, I think Members Swenson and I are trying to get to the same point in different ways. That is, we got a contract, they're supposed to perform, everybody else is out there working in this weather. Whether or not they've got a legitimate excuse for not being able to perform this year, I don't think it's inappropriate that we bind them in some way to the contract that they've signed to do this year, and next year it's the same cost.
I think that's what I understood.
That's what Member Swenson's saying, too, I think.
So, you're, you want to amend the contract to change the completion date. All of the terms and conditions remain the same.
Correct. Let's make it clear with the contractor, you will agree to your request for a change, but there'll be no change in the bid price.
Yep.
He has to deal with his subcontractors. We don't have a contract with the subcontractors.
Do you want to restate the motion?
I thought it was clear.
I thought it was clear.
All right. We got, we've got good discussion on this. We got a motion, a second, with respect to this particular matter. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And then, the next consent agenda item was pulled by Member Bennett.
Yes.
Item L, 4L, which is Minnesota Department of, the deed grant application for Pentagon Park South.
Thank you. I am looking at the paragraph at the top of, it's the third page of our packet, second page of the resolution, and it reads, "Be it further resolved that if the Pentagon Park South project fails to substantially provide the public benefits listed in the application within five years from the date of the grant award, the city of Edina may be required to repay 100% of the awarded grant per Minnesota statute." And my question, usually we are assured that by authorizing a grant application or partnering, the city is not taking on any obligation. Here, it appears that with the condition somewhat in the, or pretty much in the control of the developer, the city would, in fact, be liable, potentially liable, to repay 100% of the grant, and could we have some comment on that, please?
Councilmember Bennett and members of the council, I did ask Bill Moondorf if he could comment on that for us.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, this paragraph is pretty standard for deed. It's what they ask us to, to put forward to them. I did a little bit of investigating this afternoon, and through the research that we've done, we found no instance where deed has actually ever required anyone to repay a grant. There were a number of grants that were awarded and invested during the, during the recession years recently, and those were not required to be repaid because they still achieved their objectives. They didn't work out as quickly as they intended. So, the term "may" is used here purposefully by deed. This proposal, the grant application, is only for the Pentagon Park South portion, and the public benefits that they're attesting would be an increase in the tax base from the current value of about $118,000 to a substantial increase, almost $3 million, 2.9 million. So, the tax base increase is one of the public benefits. And then the second is job creation, and the developers, consultants have put that proposal together. They assure me that they use conservative, yet reasonable, numbers. One way that we could address the concern is to make sure that when the city enters into the sub-recipient agreement, that we clarify if there is a problem, and if the city is required to repay the funds, that we then pass that responsibility onwards to the developer. The, the contract between the city and deed is one of two contracts. The city does have that second contract between the city and the redeveloper, so that, that could be tested, or that could be given attention by staff in the event that we are successful in this grant application.
All right, so we'd want to secure an indemnification hold harmless from the, from the developer, from Hillcrest, to kind of backstop us on this. If we have this obligation, they have a responsibility to hold us harmless and reimburse us.
That, that's correct, and that might be part of our standard sub-recipient agreement. I'm not, I haven't reviewed one of those.
Roger?
I have not read one of yours either, but I've reviewed them from other cities, and yes, you'd always put that in there. I mean, if they fail-
All right. Make a note on that.
Then they reimburse us.
Make sure it's in there.
If I see it, yes, I'll do that.
All right.
Question?
Member Bennett, the debt, remember, Brindle, do you have a related question on this matter?
Yes. Well, that actually brings up another question, and that is that if, if we want a clause of indemnification, is there reason to revise this resolution and bring it to us at our next meeting with the indemnification clause in here?
That would be handled by a separate agreement with the developer.
Oh, it would? Okay.
That's in a separate contract.
All right.
The state's not going to change its terms for us.
Okay, and then, I just want to clarify the role of the city in this grant. Why is the city involved in this deed grant? Is it required that the entities applying for this deed grant be cities?
That is correct. The way that this particular grant program is set up is similar to other grant programs like the Met Council, where the formal applicant is a municipality, city, village, et cetera. So, the grant award is to the city, and then the city is then expected to turn around and do a grant award to the, to the sub-recipient, which is the developer or the builder.
Okay.
So, that's just the way that this particular program is set up.
All right, great, thank you. I just needed that clarification so everybody understands. Thanks.
Member Bennett, you feel comfortable moving this matter?
I do, thank you. We'll all remember the sub-recipient agreement clause, right? Okay, so I will move it.
Second?
Got a motion, a second, with respect to 4L. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. That completes our work on the consent agenda, and then we will move to the special presentations and recognition section of the agenda, and it's our pleasure to have Sheriff Richard Stanek with us tonight from Hennepin County, who is going to update us as he does from time to time. Sheriff, it's good to have you here. I think it's, I don't know why, but it seems especially good to have you here on the week of the 4th of July.
Thank you.
Maybe you're in parade mode already, I don't know, but-
I'm ready for Friday morning. 10 o'clock, right, sir?
10 o'clock, that's correct.
I won't be late.
Be here at 9:00.
We still need the mic, though.
Oh. Means the mic's not working?
Just for media.
Okay, so.
You can hear me just fine? Thank you.
We can.
All right. Hey, thanks very much for having me. My name's Rich Stanek. The sheriff in Hennepin County. It's a pleasure to be here. Every year or so, I get a chance to come out, meet with no less than 45 different sets of city council members across our Gray County, come a little bit about what we're doing, and mostly in partnership with local police departments. We have the extreme pleasure of being able to work with your new police chief. New, I say, because he's only been here a couple of months, but he's a long-term entity here to the city and to the residents that he serves. We have a great working relationship with him. He's a down-to-earth, real kind of guy, and we really enjoy working with Dave and the men and women who work out here. Likewise, your city manager, Scott, I've had a chance to work with him over a number of years in various capacities. He does a fine job as well and makes my job a lot easier as a sheriff of this Gray County. Mr. Mayor, members, if you'd allow me, I've got maybe 10 minutes of some comments. I'm going to move through a PowerPoint presentation. I'll go through fairly quickly. With me tonight is Lieutenant Bob Stopey. Bob is one of our watch commanders. He normally works from 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM. He brought with tonight a copy of our 2013 annual report and our strategic plan. You'll find as you go through, it really lays out pretty well what the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office does, particularly in partnership with the other local law enforcement agencies and our federal law enforcement agency partners. Told you a little bit about myself. I got elected in 2006. This is my 31st year in policing. 24 years as a Minneapolis police officer, had a chance to serve five terms in the state legislature, representing where I live up in Maple Grove, Plymouth, in Osceola. Went to work for the governor for a little while as his Commissioner of Public Safety and Director of Homeland Security, and now serving as a sheriff of this county. My office leadership is much aligned the same as Edina Police Department. Our day-to-day operations guy is Mike Carlson. He would be equivalent of the Chief of Police. He has four majors that work for him. We break our agency into four different bureaus, eight divisions, and eight captains. Each one of our captains has one of the divisions. We've got about 800 full-time personnel that work countywide, and 300 volunteers, special deputies, and others who provide services to the residents of this county. Now, you know these numbers, Mr. Mayor and members, about 1.2 million people, 500-plus square miles, 104 named lakes, three rivers. Usually, we have a test on those, but I won't ask you the 104 named lakes, 280 miles of shorelines, and like I said, 45 different municipalities. And the key here is we work with 37 different law enforcement agencies, and then eight federal law enforcement partners, much like the Chief of Police here does. We have eight distinct lines of business in the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office. Most of our local police departments provide two, three, or Minneapolis says the largest city in our county provides four of these lines of business. For the lines of business that we do not provide, we defer to the local unit of government, if they have a local police department in place, to provide their primary service. We supplement what we, what they do, but we don't supplant what we do. The other four or five lines of business that we provide, we provide as the primary service of us, so like the city of Edina, we provide jail, court security, warrant, civil process, crime lab. Edina does a great job providing patrol, 911 dispatch, investigations, and then some variety of those other five in partnership with the Sheriff's Office, and you'll see our squad cars crisscrossing your city each and every day as we've got calls for service out here in one of these other five lines of business. Sheriff's derive their authority under Minnesota State Law, Chapter 387. Real simple, the sheriff shall keep and preserve the peace of the county, the chief law enforcement officer of the county, and then we work in tandem with the other 36 law enforcement agencies that provide services within our county. The second part is through the Sheriff's Office Community Advisory Board, made up of 34 members from across this county. Some of them represent or live out here in the city of Edina. Faith community, business community, educators, Joe and Jane, average citizen. They help us with policy direction and really guide the Sheriff's Office, keeping in touch with what the community is looking for in terms of services that we provide. Jail, public safety facilities, one of our lines of business located in downtown Minneapolis, the largest jail in the upper Midwest. We have about 36,000 bookings last year. We averaged somewhere between 36 and 40,000 over the last seven years. In Edina, you booked 195 into the jail during 2013 in first quarter, can't tell, first quarter of 2014, 62 individuals were booked into the Hennepin County Jail. And you've also got holding facilities out here in Edina, so a lot of times for misdemeanor or lesser crimes where you can do the investigations out here, they'll tag and release or release from the agency out here rather than bringing them down and booking them into the Hennepin County Jail. Our jail is nationally accredited, one of the, about 3% of the jails across the country that have that accreditation. We do so because of risk management, first and foremost, high volume, high risk, and a lot of people, not everybody who comes to our jail is in the best of mood at the time they come in, but we deal with them through compassion, dignity, respect of the orders of the day. We also deal a lot with the mentally ill. Fortunately, 25 to 30%, a conservative number of our booking population who come to us suffer from treated or untreated mental illness, again, part of the high-risk population that we serve, and managing. Some other photos of the jail. Our enforcement services division located out in Brooklyn Park, Maple Grove, right on the border on Jefferson Highway there. We provided just shy of 400 hours of dedicated patrol hours to the city of Edina, again, working with the local Chief of Police and the men and women out here, depending on what the needs are. We also have a number of different special operations as a countywide full-service law enforcement agency. You know, this week, we spent two days with the President of the United States, providing dignitary protection, motorcades, all the things that go into a presidential visit. Next week, we'll be working with Minneapolis Police on the All-Star Game, as that's a week-long event as well. Some of the equipment that we have, we use on a countywide, regional basis, so rather than individual cities maybe purchasing a piece of very expensive equipment, this one alone is $450,000 to $500,000. We'll buy it as a regional asset on behalf of the county. All of your residents are also residents, of course, of Hennepin County. They all pay property taxes to the county, which provides for the county Sheriff's Office, thus that backbone of support in policing across our county. Our warrant, civil process, are two other mandated functions of the Sheriff's Office. We serve warrants year-round, a dedicated unit that does that, and then we work with the local agencies, depending on what they want to do or where the warrants are. Several weeks ago, we served about 155 individuals with warrants for their arrest for outstanding narcotics violation. At the end of the day, at the end of 14 days, we took 1,100 people into custody or cleared their warrants off the books. A number of agencies, both from Hennepin County, as well as our federal partners and the Sheriff's Office, got together for a couple of days each year to do the saturation details, but know full well that these folks are out there serving warrants every day, every time they make a traffic stop, every time they have an interaction on a police-related matter. Sheriff's Water Patrol, they've been busy this year, unfortunately. You know, beautiful Minnesota day. I just was out at Water Patrol earlier this morning, talking with the media about what to expect for this weekend. Like I said, we've got 104 lakes and three major rivers. All of them are swollen with water. We also had what looks to be a suicide or a missing person in the water this morning down in Mississippi, and so we spend a lot of time on recovery of individuals as well. Luckily, this year, we've had no drownings. Last year at this time, we had about eight drownings. We really focus on prevention aspects through the Sheriff's Office. 911 communications facility, we are rebuilding our communications facility from Golden Valley all to the city of Plymouth, out at the site of the old women's cottage at the workhouse out by Parker's Lake there. We'll be dispatching for 37 cities coming January 1. And we work in tandem with the other independent public safety answering points, what we call dispatch facilities across the county. I think there are seven or eight of them, including Edina. We network with them in terms of technology, in terms of backup, should something happen here in your city, or something happened in one of the other cities, to make sure that there is a safety net or a matrix of public safety services countywide. Hennepin County Sheriff's Office Crime Lab is one of the eight lines of business, or eight divisions, that the Sheriff's Office provides that's not mandated by law. The other seven are. However, the Hennepin County Board of Commissioners has decided to provide a full-service crime lab to the residents of Hennepin County. This is one of the main reasons why our violent crime in this county has dropped dramatically, 36% over the last seven years. And men and women, the patrol officers out there, ad nauseam, go to great lengths to collect evidence out at crime scenes, whether it's a burglary, a theft, a damage of property, a robbery, or something more serious. That evidence goes to the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office Crime Lab. We can turn it around fairly quickly, and we make cases all the time, working with the investigators and the detectives from the various agencies. You can see last year, about 113 hours in Edina. Already this year, we spent about 16, it looks like 16 different cases. I'm not sure what that translates into hours. So, full-service crime lab, Mr. Mayor and members, we do everything from DNA to ballistics, digital, forensic, you name it. Now, there's only two crime, three crime labs now in the state of Minnesota, the BCA, the Bureau of Criminal Prevention, the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, and then Tri-County and Noka Sherbin and Wright Counties that provide services for those three counties Professional Standards Division, we're located up in Hennepin Technical College, up in Brooklyn Park. We have a partnership with them. We use their dual ranges. We have staff that work up there full-time. Not only do we get a chance to look at a number of the young men and women coming out of school up there in the area of law enforcement and taking them on as recruits or interns for our agency, but also training the other agencies across the county on different aspects, whether it's active shooter training. Early in the year, we had Chief Michael Keough from Newtown Police Department after the Newtown, Connecticut shooting, as well as others. We're happy to be able to do that. We also operate a reserve school. We do two of them a year. I think this year, over the last two classes, we've had six Edina Reserve Officers. It's a pleasure to be able to work with them because these are the same ones that you're going to see at the different civic events in your city or your neighboring cities when you use mutual aid requests to police some of these things. It may be a crash out on the highway, it may be a fire, it may be, like I said, a parade on Friday morning or some other event, but you're going to see your Reserve Officers working these events and working in partnership, and so does the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office. We've got about 120 of them that work countywide. This is a photo from accident signage back in late 2012, one of the mass shootings across the country in 2012. Seven people died in this, the shooting, but you can see how times and things have changed over the years. This is my 31st year. I bet Chief Nelson has been around probably just about as long, right? I bet Chief Nelson has been around probably just about as long, right?
Not quite.
Not quite, he's close. But you can see how things have changed, right? All the way from the different agencies working together, a paramedic standing in the middle, the deputies, Minneapolis Police, state troopers off to the right, and the fatigues, cell phones, automatic weapons, totally different than it was just even 10 years ago, working in this county, but that's the progression of law enforcement to provide for the citizens and the residents of our county. Investigative unit primarily works through a Violent Offender Task Force, as well as another 40 or 50 other detectives that work countywide on a number of cases. The sheriff's office focuses on reduction of violent crime countywide. So we work with the local communities or cities or other police departments and our federal partners through task forces and others in to provide that, that service. Our criminal information sharing and analysis unit is fairly robust out here. We work through the Southwest Hennepin County Crime Collaboration. We work on a number of different cases, whether it's, I think they had a pharmacy robbery here in Edina, they had another pharmacy robbery a couple of days later in Eden Prairie. Through the information exchange, through the evidence collected, there were arrests made in those, whereas otherwise, it's fairly easy to cross over jurisdictional boundaries, not just one city to the next, but one county to the next. Our criminal information sharing and collaboration unit works on a countywide basis, and then we also network in nine metro area counties to do likewise. And so, real-time information, getting out to the patrol officers out in the squad cars and the chiefs of police or those local sheriffs, so they can deploy their resources appropriately on behalf of their residents. And you can see in the Southwest Crime Collaboration, the number of cities that participate on a regular basis. These are just some of the examples. You can read through them at your, at your leisure. This is a link analysis chart, one of the favorite tools of the CISA unit. This is a murder from up in Brooklyn Park. You can see how multifaceted it is, right? Number of different people, number of shootings over a period of months, even a year. You link the gun together, you link the individuals together through the vehicles they drive, or the associates or friends that they have, or people that were booked into jail, and this is what the detectives do, working with the analyst. They look at it from a holistic approach, not just one individual city, because the county is broken into 45 individual cities, but rather, we look at it from the sheriff's office as a countywide approach, and then we provide that service back out to the local police departments. It's very effective. Talked about the All-Star Game planning. Next week, we do threat assessments. We work with our federal partners, whether it's the FBI, the ATF, the DEA, Secret Service, whatever it might take. Spent a lot of time on heroin and painkiller addiction. There isn't any city or community in this county that's immune to this. Three years ago, when we started talking about this with some of the other sheriffs in the metro area, I had six heroin overdose deaths in Hennepin County. I thought that was a lot because in the last decade and a half or two decades, we'd really not seen any heroin overdoses. It was pretty invasive to have to tie off your arm, inject a liquid into it, right? People said it was dirty, it was invasive, wasn't something you normally saw. Last year, I had 56 heroin overdose deaths in this county alone. A lot more people went to emergency rooms across the county to the metro area hospitals. Six to 56 in a three-year time span was a dramatic increase. At the same time, four out of five of these heroin abusers started out with prescription pain pills, and so we installed these drop boxes throughout the county. Now, we put six of them at our six facilities. We encouraged local police departments to do likewise. In a period of 15, 16 months, we took in 19,500 pounds of prescription pain pills that citizens and residents of the counties dropped off voluntarily. We dispose of it friendly, environmentally safe, legally and lawfully. It's almost 10 tons of the stuff, and there's a lot more need out there. We have a number of heroin town hall meetings that we do across the county. We have one coming up here in North Minneapolis in July, out in the city of Plymouth in September. We'll be out at Minnesota State Fair for the great get-together for those eight or nine or 10 days doing likewise. On August 1st, police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical service providers across the state will be allowed to carry what's called Narcan. That's the brand name. Naloxone is the prescription med. This is an antidote, a heroin overdose antidote. It saves lives. I encourage you, and I encourage the chief, if you're not up to speed on it, get up to speed. We'll help you do it. My deputies will be carrying this on August 1st across the county when they get out to an opiate overdose, heroin overdose. An injection of this will give that individual some time to live, to get to an emergency room where they can do the proper lifesaving measures rather than losing them out at the scene. Our volunteer services division are the same as our special deputies, our community engagement team, they work across the county. Sergeant Derwin Ellis, Deputy Betsyani, Jonathan Tran, and Abdi Mohammed do a great job. They're out there every day. They work in Minneapolis, they work across the county, whether it's in a fortunate tragic death of a young man swimming in a pool in St. Louis Park, or a hit-and-run where somebody gets run over in Dayton, Minnesota, or explosion of an apartment building down in Minneapolis on Lake Street. These guys are out there. They work weekends, nights, holidays. They go to community vigils, community events, they're building robust community relations across this county. I talked about violent crime. You can see the trend all the way from years ago up to 2013. It's a 36% sustained reduction. That's a good thing. We attribute it to three things. One is advancements in forensic sciences and that crime lab and using it to our advantage. Two is good old-fashioned police work, a lot of younger police chiefs, progressive and aggressive. He uses both of those in the same sentence. Progressive, aggressive, assertive police chiefs who aren't afraid to do what's right on behalf of their county, like Chief Nelson. And then using information sharing and analysis, real-time information sharing to the officers out in the streets, so they have the information to do what they need to do. Here's Edina by the numbers, real quick. Jail bookings, 195 last year, 386 civil processes, CISA, 83 times they worked with them, 19 warrant arrests out here, our Violent Offender Task Force. And then again, you look at the 36% violent crime decrease versus 19% nationwide, we almost doubled those numbers. That's a good thing for the residents of Edina and the residents of Hennepin County. That is it. I promised I wouldn't take too much time, but I want to give you just a quick overview. I'm happy to take questions, whether it's tonight or if you want to follow up. Again, I enjoy serving as sheriff of this county and having an opportunity to work with the local elected officials like yourselves.
Good, thank you. Questions for the sheriff? Members, great.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can you tell me some of the program elements of the innovative mental health program for inmates?
Sure. All of our, Mr. Mayor and members, like I said, about 25 to 30% of the folks who come into the Hennepin County Jail, those 36,000 bookings a year, suffer from treated or untreated mental illness. We have become the de facto largest mental health, unfortunately, warehouse. That word's not a nice word, but it aptly fits anywhere. All of our folks who work in the jail, our detention deputies and our sworn deputies receive crisis intervention training. We do have a wing set off to the side of what we call a quad, where we work with those who suffer from mental illness, but we miss a lot of them. We can't provide those resources. We contract our medical services with the Hennepin County Medical Center for nurses and doctor staff who work in our jail. We also work over the last two years at the state legislature, changing state laws to allow us to move folks out who suffer from mental illness, who are not adjudicated, but rather determined to be not competent or incompetent to stay in trial, so they're not in the criminal justice system, or they're not in the jail, I should say. Remember, these inmates are some of the most vulnerable, both in terms of my staff who work with them. They're vulnerable to the other inmates in terms of assaults, and it's just not the place for them to be.
And then, in terms of the prescription drug gateway to heroin, is there any collaboration being done with the medical community since part of the problem is the over-prescribing?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members, that's a great question as well. You'll see when we do these heroin town hall meetings, that we bring in the emergency room doctor from North Memorial, we bring in a treatment provider from Hazleton, we bring in a young man from Teen Challenge, and some of the other treatment facilities who talk about life experiences. We bring in one of the detectives from the Narcotics Task Forces. We have five of them that work in the county. Together, they gave a very compelling presentation to the residents. We've had upwards of 100, 200, 300 residents of this county in attendance. We try and educate them, have a candid discussion, and give them something to walk away with in terms of how to turn the tide. I can't stand here in good conscience, though, and tell you that we have turned the tide with prescription drug abuse and/or heroin abuse. There's a lot more work to be done. We spend a lot of time out at the civic meetings, whether it's Rotary, Lions, Optimist Club, Daybreaker Club, you name it, as well as the schools and local law enforcement helping to educate them.
So the audience, though, is the general public, not the medical profession itself? Because I know that the Steve Rummler Foundation that you mentioned, Steve's Law, is working on some educational pieces for the medical community, on the, on the prescription end, the prescribing end.
Correct. Mr. Mayor, members, in fact, I was with the Rummler Group last night at the Minnesota Twins game, talking to them about Narcan. They helped us pass that legislation and get it in place so that we can help save lives, rather than seeing those lives waste away out at the scene of an overdose.
Thank you.
Other questions for the sheriff?
I had one, Sheriff, on the use of that Narcan to help save people's lives that have overdosed on heroin. Is that something that's available to the local police departments, too? Do they have access to that, that antidote?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members, Chief, I don't want to put you in a spot. Are you, are you in a, working towards that end, or can we help you work towards that end? Perfect. I promise that I will work with your chief to that end. It is available effective August 1st. Right now, state law prohibits law enforcement, firefighters, and first responders who are not certified paramedics from carrying Narcan. It has to be under a doctor's prescription or a doctor's standing order. We have changed the law to allow law enforcement and firefighters and EMS personnel to be able to do that. It is an expensive proposition for my agency. It'll cost me upwards of $75,000 over the next year to train my deputies and give them the equipment necessary, but we're committed to doing so. We're also committed to working with the other agencies in Hennepin County so that they don't have to start over. They can replicate, or we can help them provide these services. It may be appropriate for the deputies out on patrol out here in Edina, may not be appropriate for detectives or administrative staff, so we're trying to narrow it down to who really needs it, who's on the street every day. You know, there's a lot of times when someone calls 911 and they're in an overdose mode, police will get there, usually pretty close, most of the time first on scene. Sometimes it'll be fire, sometimes it'll be an off-duty firefighter, paramedic, or maybe a nurse who's passing by, who, you know, renders assistance.
All right. Well, I think our emergency medical services, first of all, are all certified, so that might be one way for us to have the PD work with the fire department and then coordinate that with you. So that's good. One of the other questions I had, when you, when you mentioned a couple of times now that 30% of the people that are coming to the jail are, have mental health issues, how do you go about doing a quick triage or diagnosis on those folks when they're coming in, and then do they get put into, with the general population in jail, or do you put them in some separate location where they can't hurt themselves or others? How do you go about handling those folks?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members, that's a great question as well. You think about this, if there's an arrest out here in the city of Edina for someone who's despondent, or, you know, spouse calls because she's not acting right, or whatever it might be, and they transport him or her to the Hennepin County Jail, we would do an initial assessment in terms of our medical staff. If the signs of mental illness are progressing or showing at that point, we will treat them appropriately, maybe send them back to. Hennepin County Medical Center may be into 72-hour crisis hold, but if they come into the jail population, usually what happens is that it takes several days before they start to manifest some of those signs or symptoms. A lot of times, people come in taking medications, or they're not on their medications any longer. We do prescribe medications in the jail through the medical staff, but it is not an easy thing, and admittedly, jail is not the place to treat those who suffer from mental illness. And so, I've made it my passion over the last several years to figure out how to do a better job of this. Now, make no mistake, Mr. Mayor, members, I'm a black and white kind of guy in terms of crime and not, but I also don't think it's fair that these folks who are incapable or incompetent of understanding the proceedings against them, sit in the jail and become at risk even greater. Simple as that.
All right, good. Thanks for hearing about that issue. All right. Anything else for the sheriff? Otherwise, we'll look forward to seeing him on Saturday, or Friday morning.
I'll be there in that big boat waving to everybody, and it's a pleasure to be here. And again, Mr. Mayor, members, I absolutely love serving as sheriff of this county, but I really enjoy coming out here to Edina. Like I said, a great working relationship with the chief, with Scott. The other day, I was out here for one of the young police officers being sworn in, the son of my brother's wife's brother. Long story, but, you know, I was very proud to see him finally get sworn as a police officer, and, you know, and work in the city in which he grew up, and his father once worked, and so on and so forth, and I think that's a very good thing. And one of the great things about local law enforcement here in Hennepin County is that we take care of our residents and people who serve us. Now, you, as elected officials, whatever line of work you have outside of this place, you take care of, you take care of your police and firefighters, and they take care of you so they can take care of the residents of your city, and that's a good thing, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Sheriff. And Lieutenant Stolkey, thanks for the report. Thanks for coming along this evening. Appreciate it. All right. That was the only item on our special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda this evening. Next, we're going to move to community comment, and of course, we had no public hearings this evening. Anyone in the audience wish to come before the council and address an issue that's not on the agenda this evening, come on forward. And you'll have three minutes. I think you were probably here when the meeting started, and you'll get a green light, and then when you've got 30 seconds left, you'll get a yellow light, and that'll be your signal to think about wrapping up. So if you have, do you have something you want to use on the center overhead?
No.
Otherwise, I think if you go to the side podium, you'll find a better microphone there, and give us your name and address, please.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Johan Rosenberg. I live at 4511 Oak Drive, a self-revered 10-year resident. And I'm here to talk about three things. First, just to give a little bit of background, my experience, I've worked on probably hundreds of tax exempt municipal financings, economic development financings, and so that's where I'm kind of coming from. I likely have my information wrong. It's a little sketchy, but one of the things that caused concern for me and why I'm here is, I believe, or at least I've heard, that this council has made some decisions based on a 2006 survey with respect to the park system that we have in Edina. And if that's the case, I'm probably wrong. I'm probably wrong, but, and there's a myriad of complex facts that you guys have to take into consideration in making your decisions. But in the tax exempt financing, one of the key components of bringing it through the rating agencies or bringing it to investors is a need survey, and that has to be current. So I'm just here to express my concern about the datedness of that particular survey, and if you've actually based decisions on that. Now, again, I probably have my information wrong. So, but, but if I am right, I guess I'm here to ask the council to consider to refresh that. A system-wide park survey, to see what the needs of the community are, and specifically as it relates to the repurposing of the Fred. So that's all I really have. I don't need an answer right now, but I just wanted to say those things. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Rosenberg. Thank you, and appreciate your comprehensive email that you sent a few weeks ago to, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
I've been putting these in here before. Do you just put it down here?
Put it right in the center there, and we'll, I think...
Can you use it? Can I write that? Please, someone like a little bit? Okay, I think I have it.
Looks like it.
Okay. Looks good. Thank you. I use this one then? All right. My name is Lori Groats, and I live at 5513 Park Place. I've lived in the city for 35 years. Could you please help us understand the implications of Mr. Knutson's decision that the owner of 5508 Dever Drive does not need a conditional use permit to elevate their front entry more than four and a half feet above the existing front entry elevation on their split-level house? I understand there will be three front entries. The garage entry, a sliding glass door entry right here to get around code requirements, and the main entry at an elevation more than four and a half feet higher than the existing entry. With a garage that will hold five vehicles and a house with three front entries, in the future, is this property going to be turned into a duplex or a triplex, which would not be in the character of the neighborhood? Does the homeowner plan to operate his manufacturing business out of this home? He based his business out of his previous home at 5301 Humboldt. With Mr. Knutson's interpretation of zoning code section 36-439, subpart 7, I could say the garage entry is from where you could measure the existing front entry elevation. We ask that the ambiguous zoning code section 36-439 be reviewed and corrected immediately by the council. We believe the code as written does not reflect the intention of the city council. Homeowners and builders will continue to circumvent the code. Mr. Knutson also overruled the planning department and stated that 5508 Dever Drive, 5508, I'm sorry, Dever... I'm sorry, Dever Drive, does not require a front yard setback variance. With the plans as submitted, we believe Mr. Knutson is in error. We would like to see his calculations. We would like to appeal Mr. Knutson's decision that a cup and front yard setback variance are not needed at 5508 Dever Drive. To whom and how do we appeal? We also request that no building permit be issued for 5508 Dever Drive until these issues in section 36-439 and our appeals have been addressed. Not every home fits on every lot. If you would please respond to us in writing to our requests, I would appreciate it. Thank you in advance, and I thank you for your time and your service. And I'd like to put on the public record, and if I may leave some copies with the city clerk, that would be appreciated.
Certainly can.
Thank you.
Thank you for managing your time well. And we'll, we'll look into this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Community comment. All right. We'll move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. The first matter in front of us this evening, under reports and recommendations, is the possible passage of resolution 2014-73, which would authorize the sale and issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds for Yorktown Continental. And Director Wallen has this matter from a city standpoint. Director Wallen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is resolution, as you said, 2014-73, authorizing the sale issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds for Yorktown Continental. The resolution and various documents are drafted by Dorsey Whitney, is, is part of a process required by state statute. Two weeks ago, at the previous council meeting, was part of that process where the council held a public hearing. This is a continuation of that, of that process to go through to be able to, or for Yorktown Continental to be able to issue these housing revenue conduit debt. The conduit debt is, allows a development like this to be able to utilize the city's tax-exempt status, but does not commit the city. So, so these, these bonds would be solely the responsibility of the developer, even though they are issued through the city. The city would not, would not have any responsibility on these bonds, principal or interest during their entire life. Tonight, to, to present the process and, and answer any questions, Mr. David Dye and Frank Hogan are here.
All right. Director Wallen, a quick question for you. When you, when you mentioned earlier that these documents were drafted by Dorsey Whitney, they were drafted for the benefit of the city by Dorsey Whitney, I take it?
They, they are drafted for the, for the benefit of both, the, the city and Yorktown.
All right. All right. Well, they are typically our bond counsel.
Yes.
So, I'm thinking that they were drafted to protect our interests.
That's, that's correct.
They can't serve two masters here, I take it. So, they were drafted to protect our interests. Anyway, we want to bring the folks from the project forward, and I also see a gentleman from Doherty's here with us tonight, too. Yeah, gentlemen, welcome back.
Thank you.
May I introduce yourselves again, please?
I'm Frank Hogan with Doherty and Company. We're Yorktown Continental's investment banker.
I'm David Dye, partner in Yorktown Continental Limited Partnership.
Good. Gentlemen, go ahead.
Do you want to talk about the process a little bit?
Sure, sure. I think, as we mentioned a couple of weeks ago when we were here for the, the public hearing, we're in the midst of, of going through the FHA underwriting process. This step will allow us to issue debt, which will allow essentially the project to move forward. Issue bond in, in two series. One will, you know, essentially finance the, most of the bricks and mortars, and then a, a series B, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, will actually bridge the tax credit equity that is being contributed to the project that, that comes in over time.
Good.
So, I think we're looking for, you know, moving towards a closing in, in sometime in August or early September.
That would be very good.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Mr. Dyes, and then, Mr. Hogan, too, I take it that you've had an opportunity to review these documents that were drafted by Dorsey? You concur in the, the documents that were drafted? You're satisfied with the craftsmanship involved and the, and the, and the terms and conditions that are contained in those documents?
I believe so, yes. The documents have been submitted to our attorneys also. They have made some comments with Dorsey, so I believe that everyone's on the same page.
Okay. Let me bring our Director Wallen back up. One of the sections of the proposed resolution, section eight, is actually the last section of the resolution. I think that embodies what you, you were talking about earlier, and what we talked about at the public hearing, and that is that we're a conduit financer here, and the section eight portion of the resolution is a limitation on the city's obligations, which says, notwithstanding anything contained in the bonds or the bond documents, the bonds shall not constitute a debt of the city within the meaning of any constitutional or statutory limitation, shall not be payable from, nor shall constitute a charge, lien, or encumbrance legal or equitable upon any funds of any property of the city, other than the revenues specifically pledged to the payment thereof pursuant to the bond documents, and no holder of the bonds shall ever have the right to compel any exercise of the taxing power of the city of Edina to pay the bonds or the premium, if any, or any interest thereon, or to enforce payment thereof against any property of the city, other than those rights or interests of the city which have been pledged to the payments thereof pursuant to the bond documents. So, what interests of the city have been pledged to the payment thereof pursuant to the bond documents? Anything?
No.
For Hogan? Nothing?
No.
And, and there is a fee that's being paid for us to provide this conduit financing? Is that correct, Director Wallen?
That's, that's correct.
What is that fee?
There is a fee as a, as a part of the, and I believe it's a half, one half of 1%.
All right. In plain speak, we don't have any potential liability here, in any form or fashion. Is that accurate?
That's, that's, that's a correct statement, and, and.
Mr. Hogan, you would say that you would concur?
I agree.
All right. And, now, I had one other question. I think, member, some of the other members may have questions, too. Member Bennett.
Yes, Your Honor. That, that clause, or the limitation, is stated consistently and repeatedly throughout the documents. So, they are clear on that point. I do have a question regarding the regulatory agreement, which it, I think we had some brief discussion about previously. That is the part that's going to trigger a review, a regulatory review by the city, I believe, and it's the 20% of the units. I think my, this would be a question directed to Assistant Planner Repia. Is, is this the agreement that was referenced earlier that triggers the city's certification regarding the occupancy, the qualified occupancy of some of the units?
The regulatory agreement is what triggers that process, yes.
Okay. And that mentions a, a threshold or a requirement of 20% of the units. The affordability of the other units is guaranteed by other documents that are not before us, but run between the owners and HUD. Is that correct?
That is correct. The use agreement that was signed in 1996 is what I believe you're referring to, yes. In addition to that, there will be another agreement that's associated with the tax credits that will also be another layer of agreements about affordability.
And those are referenced repeatedly in the documents, but just are not before us because they're not agreements that we're becoming a party to.
Correct.
Thank you. Director Wallen, would you come back up? I just remembered the other question I wanted to ask him. Mr. Hogan, stand by. There's nothing in this conduit financing that in any way inhibits or limits our borrowing power. Is that correct?
That's, that is correct. And we have.
There is no potential affect to our bond rating?
That is correct.
Our double triple A bond rating by virtue of engaging in this conduit financing.
That is correct. These, these, these bonds are not looked at by our bonding, bonding agencies, rating agencies, in any way as, as they're looking at, at us and, and the quality of, of our, of our rating. And the city does have several other similar issues out there that, that the, the documents and, and the process would, would follow along similar to, to other, other similar multifamily housing projects that, that do have conduit debt with the city.
All right. Good. Thank you. So, just so folks understand what you're doing over there at Yorktown Continental, you're going to spend $64 million, Mr. Dyes, rehabbing the entire building. And with, with respect to this particular proposal, you need help on about $24,500,000 or up to $24,500,000 in, in conduit bond financing through the city?
$26 million.
Twenty-six-five, okay. Up to twenty-six-five. And the other monies are coming from other sources of taxable financing, and I understand low-income housing tax credit equity.
Tax credit equity, seller note.
Okay. Good. Well, I think they, I'm really pleased to hear that you're making that kind of an investment in the building. So, let's see the, let's see what the disposition of the council is. We went through the hearing, as you pointed out, a couple of weeks ago. Is there, are there any other questions from any other council members? Member Vindal?
Couple of things that I would benefit from an explanation of, just some technicalities. In occupancy restrictions, at least 40% of the completed units in the project shall be occupied by qualifying tenants. And a qualifying tenant qualifies by income eligibility. Is that true?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And they have to requalify annually?
Yes.
Okay. And there's a form of income certification included here. So, they fill this out. Do they have to provide any supporting documentation along with this form?
They do, yes.
Okay. So, what is the income that qualifies them to, to be a qualifying tenant?
The income is established every year by HUD. It's based on 60% of the area median income for a single, most of the people that do live at Yorktown are single people. At 60%, that is in the low 30,000s.
So, is this 60% of the, of the low median income?
Area, area median.
Area median. This isn't by age or demographic? It's just area median income?
It's the.
So, it's just income qualification, a matter of the age?
Yep, exactly so, yes.
Okay. All right. And then, there's reference to the home program, which is, it's kind of a subsidy through community development block grant dollars.
Correct. Yep.
And so, how are those monies used at Yorktown?
In the case of Yorktown, there are no home funds.
Oh, there aren't?
There are not, no.
Okay. All right. It's included here. I wondered. Okay. All right. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for council? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
Some who?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2014-73, which would authorize the sale and issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds on behalf of the Yorktown Continental project. These would be series 2014 bonds. Any further discussion? Let me see here. Do we?
Simple majority.
Simple majority, all right. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Carrie, gentlemen? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other authority for us as well?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next matter is the request for purchase, award, or bid. Director Katry has this matter. It's with regard to Pamela Park, some of the improvements that we're making over there, and some potential bid alternates that she has in her packet. So, Director Katry, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland, members of the council. As Mayor Hovland stated, I have before you tonight a request for purchase and award of bid for the Pamela Park Shelter Building. Have just a little bit of background information for you here. If you recall, on June 3rd, the city council awarded bids for the site work and also awarded bids for the artificial turf for Pamela Park. We're hoping tonight to receive approval from the council for bids for the shelter building. With that, we hope to begin construction sometime between the week of July 21st and 28th. As mentioned at the meeting earlier this evening, we have had some delays in our Pamela Park project because of the, the wet conditions down there. We've had a hard time receiving our watershed permits because half the park was underwater for such a long period of time. But we're still shooting for a December 2014 completion date, so we hope to be ready to go by the skating season. Some of the features of the Pamela Park Shelter Building are LED lights throughout, a high-efficiency HVAC system, a full sprinkler system, commercial-grade finishes, both for maintenance and durability, lots of large windows to provide natural light. We're also adding something new in this facility, solar tubes, skylights in four of the rooms that have no windows to the outside. And we'll also be re-cladding and re-roofing the well building that's on the north side of the Pamela Shelter Building. And we also have a shed roof alternate for you to consider this evening. The shed roof alternate does provide more daylight. It provides a little higher insulation level and decreases the sprinkler expense because we don't have to sprinkle an attic. So, I have a few renderings for you this evening. I thought that that might be the easiest way to help you make this decision. Here is a rendering of the gable roof design on the exterior, and as you can see, the, the structure on the north side, closest off to the right-hand side, is the well building. And this is a rendering of the interior of the gable roof design without a fireplace. And here are two different renderings of the gable roof design, one with a fireplace in the center of the room, and one with a fireplace on the north wall. And then, here's a rendering of the shelter building with the identical floor plan, but just a different roof design. This is the shed roof design, as I mentioned in the packet. Here is a rendering of the interior of the shelter building with the shed roof design without a fireplace. And here's a rendering with the fireplace on the north wall and in the center of the, the shelter building. The cost for the, the shelter building, the base bid is the shelter building with the gable roof design. It has a cost of $622,363. The alternate for the shed roof would add $75,739, for a total with the shed roof of $698,102. We also have two other alternates for your consideration this evening. One is to reclaim and repave the entire west parking lot. As part of the site work, we do have an additional complete end-to-end expansion of the west parking lot, but only on the west side of the west parking lot. So, I'm suggesting this evening, that parking lot is not in good condition. I'm suggesting that the city council might consider reclaiming and repaving that entire parking lot for an additional $77,088.
I have a question on that, Ann.
Yes, ma'am.
What, what does it mean to reclaim a parking lot that's part of a park?
Basically, you, you scrape off the top surface of the parking lot, so you're able to, to repave it without going all the way down to the base layer.
Okay. So, it's not like reclaiming property?
No.
No.
Okay. It's just the use of a word that I didn't understand.
Absolutely. No. Thank you.
All right.
And then, the addition of the fireplace in either alternative would be $29,123. So, I have several different scenarios for you to consider. I would be happy to answer any questions. Our budget for this, for this part of the project was $3.377 million, and the only alternate that we have before you this evening that is over that budget is the shed roof with a fireplace and with the reclaiming and repaving of the west parking lot. I'd like to mention also that we do have a $118,000 project contingency if we have problems during construction. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, the base building with the gable roof is $622,363. If you go back to your slide, that will help, I think. All right. So, if we go with a shed roof.
west parking lot. I'd like to mention also that we do have a one hundred and eighteen thousand dollar project contingency if we have problems during construction. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, the base building with the gable roof is six twenty-two, three sixty-three. If you go back to your slide, that will help, I think. All right. So, if we go with a shed roof instead of the gable, the price increases by seventy-five, seven thirty-nine. What is so different about the shed roof and the gable roof that it's that much more?
Member Brindle, I have with me this evening Paul Callias from RGM Construction, and Jill Bills from Wendell, who is our architect for the project. Would either one of you be able to answer a couple of specifics, Paul maybe, about the, the increase in cost?
It just doesn't seem to me there's that much difference in roof area, but I might be wrong.
Well, you, you are not wrong. There is a difference in construction. With a gable roof, we're doing very conventional construction, simple gable truss. With the shed roof, we are looking at doing it with a SIPs panel, a structural insulated panel. That panel is basically constructed with plywood on the outside framing, insulation, which is rigid insulation, and then plywood on the inside. To construct that panel costs more money. It's done off-site, it's erected. To do that construction adds money overall to the project, because it changes the structure itself in the building. We also increased the height of one of the outside walls, we're adding clear-story windows. Where on a gable-end roof, our wall framing is all one level, here we have two different levels of framing to do. So, there is an increase, material, labor, and other amenities, windows, and additional siding that is also added to the outside of the building.
Okay. Is there, my other question then, is, is there an energy cost savings benefit to one type of construction than the other? We have more solar windows with the shed roof than we do with the gable?
The, you're, you're adding additional clear-story windows or taller windows on the north side, so you're gaining more daylight, you're not gaining any solar gain, because anything that faces the north, as you know, you're not going to get that sunlight. You'll get the natural daylight in. So, there's really no efficiencies there. As overall, the efficiency of the roof system is very similar. Your SIPs panel may give you actually a little bit better insulating value than a standard gable truss.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other folks? Member Bennett?
So, not necessarily saving on heating costs, saving on lighting costs with the additional windows?
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay. But the panel on the roof could save, or the construction, the differential construction could help save heating costs because you won't have as much heat loss through the roof?
You're actually, with the shed roof, you have a larger volume of space, because it's going to be a taller building.
Uh-huh.
So, you're, the, the heating element overall, it's probably a wash between the two when you compare the gable to the shed roof.
Okay. So, the add again is daylight, but not other energy savings. What about the fire suppression differential? So, you, my read of the staff report thinks is that you have sort of a dual sprinkler system, if you go with the conventional gable construction, that you have to have it sprinkled in the interior, on the interior side, and in addition, you have to sprinkle it in the attic space. So, some cost savings in not having to double sprinkle?
That is correct.
And is there any ongoing savings then, from not have, in terms of maintenance or any kind of operation of the building?
There, there is slightly with a gable truss, we knew, we put a dry system in the attic space, which requires a air compressor. With going with the shed roof, we keep the system wet, we keep it on the warm side of the building, or inside the building, and that doesn't require a compressor, and a compressor needs annual maintenance, et cetera. So, you're eliminating a piece of mechanical equipment and an annual inspection for that piece of equipment.
Do we know roughly what the cost of that would be?
To eliminate that wet or dry system up in that attic, I think we are in the neighborhood of three to four thousand dollars.
For your save?
Yeah.
For me, public buildings and the architecture of public buildings is really important. And I, I really favor the shed roof design. I think it's an extraordinarily better design, understanding, of course, that all beauty is in the eye of the beholder. I do think that the, that the design with the shed roof is far superior to the other one, and I think it would stand the test of time far better. We delivered a product similar to the gable roof design over in Countryside Park, and I, I think it falls short of the mark in terms of what we've historically done in our park system, but I think the shed roof design here would be an outstanding addition to Pamela Park and our community. And I think if we, if we did alternate number four, that would add the shed roof and the west parking lot, we would still be within budget from what we had put together there at three point three seven seven, we'd be at three point three six seven, ten thousand under budget, with the contingency then to be able to manage the budget properly. So, I would, I would favor alternate number four. I personally like the idea of the fireplace, but at twenty-nine or thirty thousand dollars, it creates a real sense of ambivalence for me on that, and I'd like the idea of staying under budget.
I agree.
Member Swenson?
Yeah, I agree with that. I like the look of it. Since that was our soccer park, please, yes, go ahead and fix that parking lot completely. I'm fully supportive of that. And I'm going to nod to the mayor as to what he wants. He's the one that's driving the redo of this particular building. It's important to him that it look at the level that he expected it to. I know that originally he was disappointed, so I'll support his alternative four.
Member Bennett?
I'm going to go a slightly different direction, not on preference, but, so, the west parking lot is the parking lot by the playground, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And also serves people who have, for instance, come to walk the trails. The north parking lot would be the one that would serve more the ice rink, and the south parking lot would be the, parking lot that'd serve more the soccer fields.
Yes, Member Bennett, that is correct.
Okay. And this, the shelter will serve how many seasons and what, what uses?
Member Bennett, we see this as a very year-round facility. It's certainly going to be a very popular skating warming house. We have a very large pleasure skate area there, and we also have a very popular hockey rink at that site. So, I'm certain that that's going to be a very popular Shelter Building. The Pamela Park Neighborhood Association is very excited about having this Shelter Building available for their use. I've met with several neighbors there that are very interested in using that as a rental facility for, for private parties throughout the year, and it'll be open for use for our athletic associations, and it'll be open just for the general public to be able to utilize the facility and the restroom facilities year-round.
Great. And are we approaching a system where we are going to be able to keep restrooms open on a seasonal basis in park buildings?
Yes, Member Bennett, in fact, part of the, the budget for Pamela Park is to bring fiber into the park at an expense of approximately fifty thousand dollars, so we're able to put our keyless entry system into this building, and we'll be able to lock and unlock the building remotely.
Great. Thank you. I will support alternate four as well.
Is there a motion on, on that one?
So moved. I'll second.
All right, we got a motion and a second to approve alternate four, which adds the west parking lot and the shed roof to the, to the park building. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'm going to dissent on this one. I think the, as I said when this originally came up, I like the consistent look between parks with the, with the original design, and I would stay within the original allocation we made, and go with number five, which, of course, we're going to add the parking lot facility, but I would, I would keep the fireplace. If you've been to some of the Three Rivers Park facilities that have the fireplaces, it's, it's a nice touch to the room and something a little different. And with that, those alternates, but staying with the original design, we'd still be forty-five thousand dollars lower than alternate four.
All right. Any further discussion?
Well, just, I, I did think about that, and I don't think that the shed roof necessarily departs from looking like the other park buildings in the city. I think it gives us some variety and some different personality to different parks, which I think could be a benefit.
All right. All those in favor of alternate number four, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Carrie? Thank you, Director Cattrie. Thanks, Mr. Callias.
Thank you very much.
And the architectural firm as well, thank you. And next, Resolution two thousand fourteen dash seventy-six, accepting various donations.
So moved.
Second.
What a great bit of enthusiasm there.
We're getting really good on that one.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie? And for this last two-week period, reporting period, the Dyna Arts Center is a recipient of some items in kind, I guess is one way to describe it. And those donors' names will be posted on the website. All right. We're into correspondence and petitions, anything other than what we had on the dyes this evening? Manager Neil? All right, thank you. And aviation noise update, Member Bennett or Manager Neil? Anything?
Well, we, we have a B. Advisory communication.
Eight-B is asking for action. Eight-B from the Human Rights and Relations Commission, action requested that City Council sign a letter.
All right, thank you. Let's back up to eight-B. Who's handling this matter?
Well, as a matter of course, this is how we present commission recommendations.
We've had them before.
So, this is always how they come to you?
Is this, is this action requested this evening, or is this action that we would take under advisement?
I think the Assistant City Manager is waving, and.
Waving furiously over here. Mayor, council members, what we have communicated to boards and commissions with respect to items that they want to put on your agenda that aren't part of the work plan, is that they forward it in an advisory communication? Then it's at your discretion to direct us to add it to the agenda or to not add it to the agenda?
In this instance, the deadline for sign-on is July third.
Right.
So, if it is going to be addressed, it would need to be addressed this evening.
Right, that's correct.
All right. Preference of the council, any comments with regard to the proposed letter to the Bureau of Democracy, Human Rights, and Labor at the U.S. Department of State?
Well, in reading this, it is, it's already been reviewed by the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and committing to promote and protect human rights locally as it relates to local policy and guidance on the practices of things that we put in place for our city. So, it looks like it's been vetted and accepted by U.S. Council of Mayors, if I, if I read this correctly.
You have read it correctly.
Okay.
Well, I guess I'd move it. I'll second it. The Advocates for Human Rights is an organization that I'm familiar with. I know many of the people who've served on its board and were involved in its formation, including the Frasers, former mayor of Minneapolis. And it's an organization that I think has commanded respect locally around the country and around the world. It conducts investigations and trainings in many different countries, provides learning opportunities through its internships, but also is an excellent leaders, excellent leader in the subject areas it covers.
I think the observation was that the Human Rights Committee's concluding observations reflect that strengthening the U.S. Human Rights Record requires cooperation, collaboration between all levels of government, and highlighting numerous gaps within the protections afforded in the reality in local communities. So, that would certainly have applicability to us, and we do have a strong history of standing behind human rights in our community. Any other further conversation or discussion about this proposed letter?
Nope.
And we got a motion and a second. All those in favor of, I guess, having all of us sign this letter, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie? And we need to get this out. Are folks able to stop by and sign this letter, or do you want me to sign it on behalf of the council?
Could you sign on behalf of the council?
Sure, be happy to.
Okay.
For myself and on behalf of the council as well. All right. Thank you, Member Brindle, for catching it.
Do we have a copy of it?
We'll, we'll get it.
Okay.
All right. And now, on to aviation noise update. Member Bennett?
Manager Neil and I will be scheduling a meeting with MAC staff to discuss the location of the RMTs. I think we both received separately that email. There's been a MAC staffer on vacation, but he is now back, and it's time to look at the maps and the concentrations and get that scheduled for testing, measuring this fall. Also, just want to remind people briefly of a couple of things. The next Noise Oversight Committee meeting is Wednesday, July sixteenth, at one-thirty P.M. at the MAC offices on Twenty-Eighth Street, south of Highway sixty-two. The next Public Input Meeting also happens to occur this month. It will be taking place in Mendota Heights on July twenty-ninth, beginning at seven P.M. And encourage anybody who wants to contribute their comments, but also wants to hear what is being discussed on a regional basis, to attend that meeting. And finally, a member of the community has suggested that we look at establishing an Aviation Committee or working group, either to serve on, as an independent body, or as a working group of the Transportation Commission. And the purpose that this citizen is looking at is public education, dialogue, and also tapping the expertise that we know exists in this community, and that some of us have experienced, had conversations with, but people are not in the room together. So, what I'm doing this evening is simply bringing the idea forward for consideration, and I'd appreciate a revisit of it at a future date. There are similar committees in different communities, sometimes.
Is it not only transportation that they're under?
Well, there's, sometimes they're completely independent. I think Mendota Heights has a completely independent committee, and in fact, the council member who now serves as co-chair of the community side of the NOC started on that body before she ran and was elected to their city council. In Minneapolis, I think it's chiefly a staff committee, and it is made up, I believe that our MAC representative, Lisa Palin, who also represents part of Minneapolis, attends those meetings. Someone from Representative Ellison's office attends those meetings. So, that's very staff-based and upper representation. So, this is not a prescriptive request this evening, it's more an idea planting again, and would love to hear what colleagues would like, but would think that it would benefit the community again, from that educational standpoint and also the advocacy standpoint, to be bringing some of the voices in our community together.
Would it make any sense to contact health? We have the issue of noise pollution or environment or transporta, I mean, there, if you were going to have a subcommittee, there are a couple of different commissions that we have that it could potentially be under, depending on where it's going with its direction.
Well, it also could be a group like the Human Services Funding Group has been, that pulls somebody, somebody from planning. But all, but what I'm also, in this part, I am envisioning, or being a little recommending on, is we have people in the community who are not involved in boards and commissions, who have tremendous background, and I, and I.
Yeah, no, I was just trying to think if you were going to do a working group, I was curious.
Where's the best home for it?
Sure. Where the best home for it is, and yes, aviation is a form of transportation, but usually what we're looking at is environmental issues, whether it's pollution, whether it's noise pollution, how it impacts, whether it's an emotional pollution. So, I just was kind of trying to figure out where its home would be.
Sure. And from a planning perspective, this was, this was a headline I caught in the Star Tribune last Friday, stricter height limits sought for buildings around airports.
I saw it.
And reading in the text of the article, they're looking even as far as ten miles out. And the idea being that you need to keep flying a plane even if one engine is out, you need to have safe routes when that elevation is lower to be able to bring it back safely to the airport. And as development, redevelopment is occurring in adjacent communities, some of those routes are being narrowed or lost. So, there are a number of different aspects to be looking at, and certainly the health, the community health, is one of the things that the national organization that we're a member of is looking and advocating for in that federal aviation bill.
What, as we contemplate. What, as we contemplate this and bringing it back at a future meeting, why don't we all think about where the best, the site is might be for that, the best home for it? So there's a lot of good arguments amongst those various boards and commissions. Manager Neil?
Your Honor and members of council, I was just going to add that the other context we could bring to you is to take a look around the Twin Cities and see how different cities are handling this issue and bring some ideas back to you as well.
Okay. Good. Thank you. All right. Mayor and council comments, Member Brindle.
All right. Thank you. A couple of things. Earlier this week, members of the First John Philip Susan Memorial Band went to Fire Station Number One, and we were trained in first responder CPR training. The band plays to about 10,000 people a year, and sometimes we play like Coponi Art Park. It's far away from the road. You have to get into the park. There's kind of a natural amphitheater in the woods. And, and so if, and much of our audience is elderly, and the band isn't getting any younger. And so we sought and received a defibrillator from Fairview Southdale. Rob Grooman, a vice president at the hospital, arranged for that for us. And we are very grateful for the device. We are also grateful to Fire Chief Tom Schmitz and Assistant Fire Chief Craig Essig for taking about an hour of their time and spending it with us and giving us a good CPR lesson. And also just an overall, here's what you're going to do if this happens. You've got this person doing this, you've got this person doing this, you've got people looking for the ambulance to get them into where you are if it's remote and off the road, which some of our sites are. We played at the Pond Dakota House in Bloomington, and, and that's kind of near 102nd and Nicollet at a park in Bloomington. It's Gideon Pond's home. And that's another one of those locations. It's on the bluffs over the Minnesota River. And it's lovely, but it's off the beaten track. And if something happens, there's no device there. So we are very grateful to have one that just shouts the commands, tells us what to do, and it makes decisions on what's needed for the, for the individual. So it's pretty cool. So a shout out to, to our fire department. And another shout out in the Edina magazine, exporting expertise, Chief Schmitz again, as well as James Harding, a member of our fire department, traveled to Liberia. And they, they were helping with, helping them Fire Rescue Alliance to help rebuild Liberia's, Liberia's fire and medical programs. So thank you to both of them for taking the time away from their families to go and, and help those in, in Liberia to be able to provide for themselves and represent Edina well. And then, um-
You can talk about the students?
Okay. And then, in all of this preparedness with all the water that we have, one of the notes that came through, Manager Neil was texting us and keeping us up to date on what was going on that Thursday, June 19th. And one of the comments was that there is an underground storage tank at Pamela Park.
Right.
And I guess I'd like to just kind of reflect on the city fathers who had the foresight to-
It's not that old.
Isn't it?
No.
It was put in after Tower Street was completely flooded by Highway 100.
1998.
And if you drive-
I thought on the council, he put that in there.
Yeah. If you drive just north of that entrance into Pamela Park, you'll see little signs that says underground buried tank or something because they don't want anyone driving over it or taking any heavy machinery in there. And it was to help because that area brings in water from Highway 100, and that's when Tower Street flooded all the way up to the tops of about a dozen basements.
Okay.
So.
Tower of St. John, I think.
I think, I think we're lucky to have a facility like that when we have, we're overrun with, with water. So those are my comments. So thank you.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
Well, Member Brindle and I finished interviewing 53 high school students.
Oh, yeah.
There were 58 who applied for board and commission positions, and we are in the process of finalizing our report, which should come before you in two weeks, and our recommendations. We had a few students withdraw, again, 58 original applications, but we did interview 53 of the students. We had some help from some board and commission chairs this year. Much appreciated. They'll be listed in the report, named in the report. And we're also going to recommend a couple of, well, one particular change. Because there were so many qualified students this year, and so few relatively positioned, 16, we are going to recommend that we are naming alternates, and we are asking that the board and commission chairs look at attendance at the end of December. So that will give student, that will have given students four months to serve. And if, if students are not meeting that 75% threshold in the ordinance, then we're asking that we reappoint from the alternates. And we've ranked them. For every board and commission, we're listing at least two alternates. For one, we're listing three. And we've, we gave some preference to seniors. I think 11 of the students that we're recommending be appointed are seniors. But anyway, we're hoping that using the alternates and looking at attendance, it makes for a better experience for the students and for the commissions as well. And I have some questions that I'll just raise and then ask for possible manager comment on later, and that is, we've, we heard a little bit tonight, and I've certainly had some calls recently about construction management, looking particularly at plan review, stormwater impacts, drainage impacts. And then also just wanted to note that at 47th and Upton in Minneapolis, one of our prominent local builders is-
I walked by that today after you told me that.
Yes. And there are prominently displayed signage that construction on that site, no activity on that site can begin until 8:00 in the morning. So I know we've been told that, that something about our hours are restriction, but one of the calls that I had was from someone who is living in the midst of road reconstruction, utility work, and residential reconstruction. And she's a very strong, active woman, and she broke down in tears on the phone. So we know that this is having an impact on people, and I know it's something that we visited, but maybe would be helpful to just find out what, if any, changes can be made or updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Swenson?
I'd like to thank my colleagues on the other side for interviewing 52 students. I think you've done this now traditionally for the last three years. One, I appreciate the time you take and the due diligence you take. And I think it's always a good experience for young people to go through an interview process. At any ages you move through life, you learn a lot from it. So please accept my thanks, Mary and Joni.
Yeah. Well said. Thank you. Member Sprink?
Thank you. Few technology notes. Has anyone downloaded the Edina Go mobile app?
Yeah.
Did you?
Yeah, I've been using it, but I have.
Ted? Oh, of course. I, I did as well, and I did some test runs. And I just had, there's some great features on it. It's feature full. In terms of reporting a problem, one thing that you might want to look at is when you submit a request, first of all, the categories of complaints. But, but also, if you want to take a picture, which is, it's the most important part of that mobile reporting, that's the last step in the reporting process. And it seems a little more intuitive to take a picture and then choose a category and report. So trying to remove that barrier for the user might be something to take a look at. But, and then the other thing is, there are some features that lead you to the city website page, but it's not the mobile version of the website. It's the general web version, and so you have to drill down to try to see, which for me removes the utility for a mobile user. So maybe we can get those linked to mobile site pages as well. On the, on the city extra side, I know that our email subscription service is going to be, it's going to go through changes. Do you know the timing of that approximately?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason that came up was someone was praising addition to Edina. In fact, the new edition came out, and we got some correspondence on it, and it is a great piece of, of literature. Thank you for putting that together. There it is, right there. Great factual data, great information about our, our strategies, and just an overall great way for us to share our story with residents. But anyhow, someone had called in and wanted to see if they could sign up for a city extra subscription to that particular publication. I know that's coming. Just wanted to clarify. And then the third thing I had was, have we come to a consensus yet on the board and commission vacancies as to how we're going to proceed?
The only one we had a consensus on was the planning commission, which is, we're going to reopen that for applicants. Otherwise, I was going to add it to your business meeting on the 16th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to congratulate Mary Brindle on her successful year as President of the Edina Morning's Ed Rotary. Transition Day was this morning. A great year of service that takes an enormous amount of work. We may have broken the record for new members under her leadership.
For a club our size, I think we did.
Well, at least for our own club.
Or we certainly set a record in our own club. Yeah.
13, 14 new members in that.
13. And, and so now we've got a couple in the pipeline who will be inducted for the coming year, so.
Good. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And let's see, we had the public art kickoff on the 18th over at Penn Stripes, another very nice event. And then Walk with the Mayor was last Saturday. We went around beautiful Centennial Lakes, and then some of the folks that were there took off for the Fred, for the walk around the Fred with the consultants that were retained. The night of the 3rd, the night before the Fourth of July parade, which is at 10:00 on Friday morning, running basically from Perkins here, City Hall area, down to just short of 50th and France. The night before, on the 3rd, we will be feeding veterans and their significant others out at Braemar. And for any veterans that are, that happen to pick up this meeting, and you don't, you don't know about that opportunity for a wonderful meal, feel free to come out. I think it starts at 5:00 on the 3rd. So, and that is it for me. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got a short list for you tonight. We've got some major projects going on right now, and not just street projects, but our 50th and France kind of collection of projects are underway. So if you are down there, you'll, you'll hear noise and see signs and see construction going on throughout 50th and France. Also, the Sports Dome project is well underway. And if you go out there today, you will really begin to see where, where things are going to be because you begin to see foundations set and retaining walls and, and that sort of thing. While we were meeting, I, I exchanged communication with Chief Schmitz and found out that our paramedics do indeed have Narcon and do use that product and have for a while. So they will continue to do that. On terms of Rotary, the Rotary Clock at Centennial Lakes is up and functioning. So the next time you're there, let's take a look. It's pretty impressive. Last week, you received an email from Karen Kurt asking for your feedback on the Future IQ, the visioning team, you know, in terms of our, of our public visioning sessions. And we gave you two options. One is just to send her five names. And the other is, if we can't do that, to be prepared to kind of come together as a group and, and figure out what that, what that's going to be. So we need some, we need some names or, or a preference to come together, when?
That would also be on the work session, on the 16th as well?
On July 15th or 16th?
I said I'm happy to send five names. So is there, was there not a, did we not call us around one idea?
I'm concerned about, I, I fully support the idea of having both the school board and the council represented in full as elected bodies. And I was really comfortable with the idea of perhaps the entire planning commission in full and then certain, asking boards and commissions to designate up to three of their members to attend. But I noted that there were, there were groups that I thought were overrepresented by number, given that they're not elected and given what their role is, and why were they sending out their entire board coming rather than just a few, as with boards and commissions? I thought that was disproportionate. And I also noticed in the list of churches that it was incomplete. For instance, Our Lady of Grace is listed, but not St. Patrick's. And so I, I thought that it was a great first effort, but I thought, the reason why I didn't say, yes, I'll supply just five names is because I think that there, the list is both too long as a starting point, and that doesn't allow enough filling in for the gaps. I, that's my, sorry that I didn't send an email to that effect, but was working on that late. And so I've written down some of the other congregations that I know exist in the city. I think we need to decide if that's something that we're going to do. If we're going to invite congregations, I think we should invite them all. I think we should figure out how we're going to handle neighborhoods because that's an effort that we've really put a lot of time and, and effort and intention into. And are we going to ask each existing recognized neighborhood association to send one person to this and then be able to be the ambassador to their neighborhood on this process? I just, I, anyway, so those were some of my thoughts on the list so far.
I thought part of this, though, for neighborhoods were that there would be some listening sessions after this particular meeting. So while we don't have one representative from every neighborhood that we designated as an area, I would be uncomfortable only asking the four or three represented neighborhood associations to send one to this when there are going to, there'll be an opportunity for, it had a name. Did I forget the name, Karen?
Yeah, this is really the first step of the engagement process, but there's a, there are follow-up steps. I think the term we used was meeting in a box, where we would go out and do more outreach into the community because it is really difficult to get every group represented.
And you talked about meeting in a box, going to neighborhood associations, and I thought that was really a good idea. I didn't feel the need to, since we don't, we aren't equally represented through the city yet, to do that for this particular one.
Right. And I was just thinking, it's, we've been trying to get, to encourage, and people have called me and said, well, what do we get if we go through this effort of organizing? And I think, you know, this is one thing that we can offer, is this process a way to be present, involved in the entry level on this. I think we also talked in the work session about trying to involve people beyond the normal list. And we can certainly do it another way. That was just trying to reach out into the community. I know Member Sprague really emphasized reaching out to the PTOs, and they are on the list. But we want to make sure, I think, in this process, that even at this early stage, we're reaching beyond that, for lack of a better phrase, inner circle, and really reaching out into the community so that there's ownership and involvement right away.
I think I took a middle path. I just added a few groups that I felt were left out. One was athletic associations. But there are a couple other, and then I, I could proceed with, within those parameters. So that's not specific people. That's groups left out of the community mapping that's going to lead to this initial meeting. You know, listening to this already, I think, I think we need to have probably some more discussion about it then.
Okay.
And you, you talked about the clock. I did have a picture of it. Here it is.
It's a good-sized clock.
Yeah, it gives you a good perspective on the height.
Final thing I, I have for you is just to get some feedback and perhaps direction, but at least get you in the loop on what things are going on with the Fred Richards repurposing process. We've got a couple of meetings coming up, but, but one thing that really has kind of risen to, risen to, to the top actually during-
risen to, risen to the top, actually, during these discussions about how, how the property might be repurposed in the future, is this whole idea of the equestrian function that might be there, if that's, if that is the way the council decides to go. I can tell you when, when Ann Catry and I and others in the department were trying to kind of come to grips with what our recommendation to you was going to be regarding Fred Richards in his future, you know, what we were hearing from council were really two strong messages. One, regarding finance, is there a way that we can create a more financially sustainable model at that, for those 42 acres? And the other was access. How can we reuse this property in the future in such a way that it increases access for ordinary Edina residents to use this facility or to use this land more than they could when it was a golf course? It's, it's pretty clear to me that a facility, whether it's an equestrian facility or any other kind of facility, really is inconsistent with those two kind of key goals. We really didn't have a hope or a plan to build new buildings there, whether those buildings are for swimming pools or equestrian functions or ice arenas or anything else. There's some, there's some real compromised ability for the soils in that area are bad, as we heard from the Pentagon Park folks, to building a building there, or building buildings there. So we, as we begin to bring this forward to you and think about how that repurposing process was, was going to work, those were two things really that were in our mind, is when we think about a repurposing process, what's going to be there in the future? It was really all, all along the lines of kind of community park functions and not facilities that might be built there. I don't know if that is consistent with the way council members feel about it. If it is, you may want to give us some direction about how you want us to handle this question of, of an equestrian facility or any other kind of building or limited use kind of facility, where, where we may be leasing this, where the, where the whole proposal is kind of wrapped around leasing the park and its property to an entity that then carries out a, an important, perhaps, but limited scope kind of operation. So that is some direction I think we could use from council members.
Sure, understood.
Because it's, it's getting to the point where we, we want people at the table, but we don't want, we don't want, we don't want very specific proposals to crowd out, you know, the other, the other sort of mainline kind of projects like community parks.
Sure. And, you know, we've gotten a number of letters and emails recently, so I've given this a fair amount of thought. And when I was thinking about it, I was thinking that the spring when we voted to close the Fred Richards Golf Course, that same night, we wanted to start the planning for that land, so it would have full residential park use. And we committed that the Fred would not be sold or redeveloped into commercial use, and we talked about it that, because there was a fear in the community for that. And, you know, we took about a month, and you brought forward a consulting group for us to start working on the redesign of the park for our residents. You know, with this group that's come forward to propose a use that is not consistent with that initial scope of a multi-use, community-wide park, this equine use, it doesn't really match with what our decision to the design for that park is for all of our residents to use. So I would like to clarify our position as a council, and I would move that an equine use would not be a use that is compatible with our plans for the Fred in the future.
Member Brindle? Want to second that before you speak?
I do want to second that. I did meet with one of the, one of the people from We Can Ride, never heard of the organization before, so I wanted to learn a little bit about it and what, what they had in mind. And, and I told her outright, this is private use of public land, and we have needs for what this park needs to provide for the area around that park as well as the whole city. And, and I, I just don't, I don't see it. It's, if that were to exist in Edina, it wouldn't be at the Fred Richards Park.
Thank you. Other comments? Member Bennett, any comment on that?
Yes, I attended the meeting at Public Works very quietly. Got there shortly before it started and sat in the very back corner and left right after it ended. But I did want to hear, experience the tenor of the meeting, which I thought was a really good meeting. And whether accidentally or not, not using a microphone, I thought was really, worked really well, because people listened very respectfully to other people. They listened to the moderators and they listened to each other. And the order of speaking that the moderator set up, where you kind of started at the beginning and went across the rows, allowed everybody a turn to speak and didn't make people have to compete, to be recognized by raising a hand. And some people spoke more than once, but it appeared that everybody who wanted to speak got a chance to speak. One of the most moving comments that I heard that evening was from a gentleman who said, you can tell by my cap that I was a Save the Fred supporter. And he said, but I can see the park being something that I and my family would use. But he said it would really add sting to the loss if what ends up here is not something that I and my family can use. And so I think that, that was consistent with a lot of other expression in the room. I think that people, there is some anticipation of wider public use, and I think that's the right path to be on.
Member Sprague.
I too had a conversation with a representative from the equine group, and again, tried to explain this idea of the scope being multi-use project with broad community access, and didn't feel that there was a connection and, and tried to express that. So I'm glad that it's being brought up tonight by the council so that we can give them some clear direction and get back to the primary focus of the, of the exercise, which is engaging the community, leveraging the ideas about what these, this collection of uses might be. And, and for me, finding a way to really leverage the natural beauty of the park so that everyone can enjoy it.
Some of the folks that showed up for Walk with the Mayor had an interest in this equine activity at Fred Richards. I don't recall if there was anyone from a particular group you're alluding to that would establish a nonprofit that would lease the entire space for equine activity, but there were certainly some people there that had some equine interest for a portion of the park. And there were others there that said, hey, wait a minute, let's, let's take our time and figure out exactly what to do with this 42 acres of beautiful property cited in our community. So, and I told folks, I said, I can't speak for other council members, but I am, I'm not supportive of the notion that there be any equine activity at Fred Richards in the future. So I think we've got unanimity of opinion, if I'm reading everybody correctly here tonight, so we can, we can handle that motion here momentarily. The other, the other thing that I did receive from an informational standpoint from people is that folks are concerned that the deadline that we put on the consultants to deliver something to us, I think after the 31st of August or shortly thereafter, that that was going to predetermine the use of the Fred Richards in the future. And I think this council ought to make it clear that we're going to take the time necessary to figure out what's the best use of this property. And if we have to do a global search of, you know, what's the state of the art for, for park activity, then I think we should do that. We should take our time and do this right. And I think that's one of the concerns of the neighbors over there, that thought we had a truncated process the last time, they don't want to see that happen again. And I think that's, that's good advice. So I told folks I would raise that issue with the council members, some of the folks I've talked to one-on-one, Mayor Potem Swenson and I have had this conversation. I think it's, but I think it's important for us to, to take our time here and think about what this could be, what all the possibilities are. And to that end, I sent an email and I copied in Director Catry to some folks I know that are on the board of the Land for Public Trust, and Paige Coles, and she gave me the name of a woman who then contacted me. I sent the contact information to Director Catry. We're going to find out what, what they know about what's happening all over the country or all over the world with respect to public lands and park-like activities. So that may help us as we proceed forward in thinking about what other Fred Richards ought to be repurposed. Member Brindle?
Well, I think it's really important to understand and respect the fact that the Shawn Bowers have been engaged to suggest what could make sense there based on what they hear from our residents and based on their own experience. But it's really our decision, and it's going to be a big one. What we ultimately decide. But it may not be exactly what we get from the Shawn Bowers, but we're certainly going to be enlightened and learn a lot from the process that they're helping us go through.
I concur.
We're, we're not going into this in an informational vacuum either, though.
No.
Someone mentioned in the community comment, the 2006 survey. We also have the 2011 Quality of Life survey with the park questions of 2013. The process on the dome and that, that 10-year process of figuring out what the field needs were. We have the, all the enterprise facility reviews we did, and we've talked about community needs there. We've talked about community needs with Grand View. The park board is doing the master planning process, so this is not our first trip to the rodeo. We've got a lot of context to this discussion, and I'm as eager as the rest of you to get a final use that is really something special.
And I think the continuity of process is really important, too. There was a tremendous turnout for this meeting, and people really participated in a very fluid way. I think there were about 150 people in the room. I didn't stand and count heads because I was trying to be unobtrusive, but a lot of people spoke. And so the time, their time was used well. And I think if that process continues and people get then the feedback, which I think has been called for, I know we'll use our website, but to report back, this is what was heard and these are, you know, recommendations that are coming out, I think that forward momentum is really important. One of the things that we learned in the last few months with that, the Fred Richards process and with the Braemar process is, when your process is spaced out over time, as with the budget and the CIP discussions, sometimes people don't link the pieces. So if there's too much time that elapses, then people aren't seeing that line being drawn that connects this discussion and learning about the enterprises and the cost, the capital expenses, what parts should be met, that discussion wasn't remembered years later. So we want to make sure that we have the continuity, we want to make sure that we have the momentum. I think also looking at the Grand View process. There was tremendous momentum at the beginning. We find out now from a survey that the community is expressing not understanding, I think, again, those breaks in the process or the length of time. So I think we want to be thoughtful, but I think we also want to be having some continuity and some energy moving forward.
Manager Neil.
Thank you.
Your Honor and members of council, I, I wasn't sure when we started this conversation if, if we would have a consensus, but it sounds like there is a strong consensus among the five of you and a, and a motion pending. I just want to make sure that I take forward the, the right information. So what the consensus is, is that you want this process to continue as is, but you're putting some parameters around it, that you're looking at, that we're not interested in single use or single, or limited scope kind of uses of that property, and we're still interested in ideas and input, but along the lines of community park and, and those sorts of uses. Okay. We'll, we will pass that on to...
And the other thing is, I think, you know, I, I don't see August 31st as being a drop dead, deadline. I think I heard from you and from Director Catry that, that what we want is, is a full process. I do agree with Member Bennett that we shouldn't have it go on and on and on, because I don't think it loses its enthusiasm. So if the report comes out to us at the end of September or by the beginning of October, I think we're still working on the same timeline. You may come forward to us and say, you know, here's, here's where we are, here's what the timeline is, and are you happy with that? I, I think our goal is that the people participating feel like they've been heard. And that's really, and, and that's part of why I think the clarity of, of the direction tonight is so important.
I got it.
All right, so we got a, we got a motion, we got a motion and a second pending that, that as part of the repurposing of the Fred Richards Golf Course property, there be no equine use permitted on that property in the future. Did I correctly state your motion? Any further discussion?
I think I would, I would expand our desire to not just identify equine use, but any single use.
Or limited scope.
Or limited scope or private use.
And I would be fine, I would be fine with that change to the motion. Are you okay with that, getting that?
I have, I have a planned processes to continue, but no single scope of private use to be entertained in the repurposing of Fred Richards.
Thank you, Mary. I like that clarity.
Great.
For a guy that holds out hope for the future of the Fred Richards as a golf course, it eliminates that single use, doesn't it? Well, here's, here's another, I mean, this is another discussion element. I, I don't know where we are on the driving range project and the par three project, but here's what I'm concerned about with all this wet weather, that we can't get the permits we need or get the work done that we need to get done this fall in order to grow grass in. What if we need the Fred Richards next year or want to leave the Fred Richards open?
We have a bike trail going in on the south end of the Fred Richards next year.
We were going to put that, we were going to put that in regardless.
Right. And, and I guess, I guess my feeling on that is that I would leave Fred Richards the way it is until we have a plan. And, but, I mean, we made a decision to close it. If we want to revisit that decision based on part of Braemar not being available, that's, I suppose, something we can bring up later.
We will give you a report on that exact issue, Your Honor, at our next council meeting. We are experiencing some, some ambiguity about the status of that project, given wet weather and perhaps most, mostly because of our interaction with watershed districts, but we're, we're not prepared to, to give you some final recommendations tonight, but we will give you those next time.
All right, that's good. Timing's good. All right, everybody understand the motion?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those saying nay? Karen?
That's all for me.
Thank you. And that's all for all of us, I guess.
Happy Fourth of July.
Happy Fourth of July. Stand adjourned.